Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the March 30th, 2021 Special City Council Meeting and Work Session. This session will be conducted remotely and council members will only participate electronically. For those viewing online, please ensure that you join this meeting using the following website address, If by chance you used a different link to get here, please log out and log back in using that website. Public comment on any item appearing on the agenda may be sent to public comments@louisstonmain.gov prior to or during this meeting and all comments received will be forwarded to the city council. And with that said, we'll move to Agenda Item 1. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, could you just call the roll for attendance?
Sure, absolutely. Counselor from Word 1.
Here.
Word 2.
Yes.
Word 3. Word 4.
Present.
Thank you, Counselor. Word 5.
Present.
Word 6.
Present.
And word 7. Also present this evening, Mr. Mayor, is the City Administrator Dennis Dotay, Deputy City Administrator Dale Doughty, Finance Director Heather Hunter, and myself as the City Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. And Agenda Item Number 1, please.
Sure. Agenda Item Number 1, Public Hearing for the Brownfield Cleanup Grant for Bates Mill #5. Requested action to conduct the public hearing to receive comments from the public regarding the Brownfield Cleanup Grant for environmental hazards at Bates Mill #5. I'll note that no city council action or vote is required. You can simply just open the public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'll open the public hearing and turn this over to Lincoln Jeffers.
Great. Thank you. We also have Heidi McCarthy here from staff who's really been the one leading the charge on both writing this grant and administering it. We have two environmental consultants with Ransom Environmental, Sarah Roy and Peter Share. They are the folks actually doing the hands-on analysis of the mill. And a large part of this conversation will be them really sharing with you what they have found along the way. The city has owned Bates Mill #5 for the better part of 20 years. There had been lots and lots of environmental analysis over the years. Multiple brownfield analysis cleanups have been done back in the early 2000s. There was some work done specifically to the hydro generating assets there to determine what was going on. And the Ransom Environmental reviewed all of those past documents, discovered where there may be gaps in the record or questions that remain and deterioration that may have happened since some of the cleanup had occurred. So they have been doing quite a bit of work on it. And really, the discussion tonight is, this is an analysis of brownfield cleanup alternatives. The city received a $500,000 EPA Brownfield Grant. We need to match that with $100,000 of city money. And really, the work these folks have been doing is, what's there? What are the problems? And what are the cleanup alternatives for doing it? And they'll really make some recommendations on that. The discussion tonight is not about what's the future of Bates Mill? Will it be redeveloped or something else? It is simply, here's the problems, here are the ways we recommend that you clean it up. And there's a public comment period that is already launched. Heidi had got the notice in the paper a few days ago. The public comment period ends on April 23rd. And with that, we kind of wanted to get the information out there to the broader public. So let me turn it over to Sarah and Peter.
Hi, everyone. My name is Peter Shear with Ransom Consulting, and I'm joined here today with Sarah Roy from Ransom Consulting as well. We were hired by the City of Lewiston to help administer the Brownfields Cleanup Grant directly from EPA. One of the requirements under the federal funding for the Brownfields Cleanup Grant requires us to look at essentially a feasibility study. As Link mentioned, it's an analysis of brownfields cleanup alternatives. But essentially, it's an environmental feasibility study where we look at several options and alternatives for cleaning up the mill site. And we use that information to help us streamline for a final cleanup plan, which then gets reviewed by Main DP and EPA. As Link had mentioned, there's a long history of environmental assessments dating back to at least 1994 in our records that we've reviewed for the mill. Obviously, there was a lot of environmental work that was done while the mill was in operation. But since about 1994, some ongoing assessments have occurred. As Link also mentioned, there's been some remediation that's already been completed at the mill for certain areas. We have taken all that information and we've reviewed the long history. And as part of the grant application a year or two ago to EPA directly, we also reviewed that information and came up with a little, a few data gaps that were needed to be followed up on. So we've actually received some additional environmental assessment funding through Andescoggin Valley Council of Governments, the Brownfields Assessment Program, to go back out and do a little data gap investigation. I think some of the counselors are aware that we've been out there over the last month or two doing this follow-up data gap investigation, confirm asbestos in the roofing materials is one of the gaps. It was always presumed that there was asbestos in some of the roofing materials. But we've been actually out there to take some core samples of several of the roofing systems to verify and confirm whether, in fact, it is asbestos-containing materials. We've also gone through the mill to quantify some of the prior findings. So there's PCB-impacted concrete, there's lead-based paint. Again, I mentioned the asbestos in the roof, roofing materials, as well as there's some limited asbestos and universal waste throughout the rest of the mill building. So as part of our investigation, to kind of get our full arms around the entire complexity and to try to, you know, gather the history up until this point, until today, what the key findings are, we're pulling all that together. And one of the important reasons for doing that is so that we can have updated quantities and updated information, specifically of what's positive, what's negative for our environmental concerns in the mill. And that's so we can actually go back out now and get some initial contractor quotes so that we can get some firm numbers, a little more accurate now, instead of some engineering estimates or some ballpark estimates. This is essentially preliminary cost estimates that we're going to go seek for some reputable environmental cleanup firms. It's not, we're not going out to bid for the project right now for the cleanup, but we want to get some better cost estimates based on the quantities and the new information now, especially because of market conditions. I think a lot of you folks are aware that because of COVID-19 over the past year, a lot of construction costs, even in the residential construction industry, because building materials, construction costs are all elevated. And so we want to go out and see if we can get some real-time current cost estimates at this time as well so that we can provide that information to the City of Lewiston to help you guys make some better informed business decisions regarding moving forward with the redevelopment of the mill. So that's just a quick history of the prior environmental assessments. I do want to mention that all of our work under the Brownfields Grant and the Brownfields Assessment work, even under AvCOG's Brownfields Assessment Program, is being reviewed under the Main DP Voluntary Response Action Program at the state and the state Brownfields Program. Also, we're under direct oversight. All of our work needs to be reviewed and approved by the U.S. EPA Brownfields Program and the Brownfields folks at EPA Region 1 down in Boston. So we have a project officer that's assigned to us from EPA. We also have a project manager signed to us directly to the City of Lewiston and Ransom Consulting from Main DP at the state. As Link mentioned before, again, this is a feasibility study, analysis of Brownfields cleanup alternatives. It's draft at this time. And we're looking at some of the, now that we're getting our hands on the updated quantities and updated confirmation of the hazardous building materials and some of those cost estimates, we're now looking at an evaluation under certain criteria. We're looking at technical feasibility, the ability to implement the cleanup program, the ability to reduce the contamination and contaminant volumes. We're looking at short-term and long-term effectiveness. We're looking at the resiliency to, for lack of a better term, climate change. But EPA has this, we'll call it, extreme weather events. So as opposed to the climate change and its cost. And as I mentioned to you right now, we're actually going to seek those additional cost estimates and quotes now for some contractors based on our key findings from this data gap investigation. And so that'll also be built into our analysis of Brownfields cleanup alternatives. Purpose of this meeting is we started, initiated a 30-day public comment period regarding proposed cleanup actions. We're not necessarily talking about the redevelopment program. The redevelopment and of the mill will go through the normal City of Lewiston development process. So through council, through planning board, through all the channels that need to be completed in order for the development. What we're really talking about tonight is, we want to go over a few of those cleanup options and then solicit public feedback, Q and A tonight, question and answers tonight during this meeting, as well as during a 30-day public commentary. You can submit written comments to the City of Lewiston. I believe Heidi McCarthy has put that in the public notice for the City of Lewiston on where to send those public comments. They can either to the City of Lewiston or to Ransom Consulting. We can take those comments as well. And again, you know, we just want to, so just want to reiterate, we are currently in the middle of a 30-day public comment period. It will run through April 23rd next month. And then we'll take that information and we will address comments. And if there's a need for putting out written responses to comments, we can do that as well. The proposed cleanup actions that we've taken a look at. So we started with a little screening level analysis, and then we dove in a little deeper. We actually have two alternatives for, and we try to gauge our cleanup actions relative to the reuse planning. So Main DP, a lot of our cleanup now is risk-based on risk-based standards on whether facility is going to be for commercial use or residential use. And so we look at options that are related to the reuse. In this case, we understand that there's a couple of renewed reuse scenarios. One is working with the current proposed developer who has an option on purchasing the mill and redeveloping it primarily for commercial use. And then there is another option that looks at the possibility, depending on cost and the needs of the city, on whether demolition of the mill building is an option. So we're looking at essentially, in either case, whether it's demolition or abatement and, sorry, or redevelopment or commercial or mixed use, abatement of hazardous building materials needs to occur at some level for either alternative or redevelopment scenario. So whether it's reusing the building and redeveloping the building or whether the city plans to, in their best interest or the best interests of the city, is to demolish the building and do something different with the site moving forward. In either case, the hazardous building materials that are identified, we're talking asbestos, PCBs, lead-based paint, universal waste, those materials are required to be abated and mitigated in either of those reuse scenarios. So there's a couple of different, if we're going to reuse the building, we may be able to encapsulate some of those materials and reduce the risk for reusing the building. And in certain cases, we're going to demolish the building, then some of the materials like the PCV impacted concrete cannot be encapsulated, it's going to have to be removed, segregated, and disposed of separately as part of the cleanup plan moving forward. So we're looking at all of those options and alternatives. Those have been laid out in our draft analysis of Brownfields cleanup alternatives. That draft report is available for review by the public. And if you, I believe it's on the city's website and it can be downloaded. Or you may contact either the city or Ransom Consulting, and we can provide you a copy as well for that. If there's any translation services or anything like that that needs to be completed, we can also provide that for certain folks in the public that may need some translation services or some additional, you know, question and clarification on our reports. One other component that the EPA Brownfields requires us to look at is the Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act. So we have to also look at, see if a building or a certain property has historical significance. We have to contact the Main Historic Preservation Commission and also seek approval for our proposed actions so that we don't have an adverse effect against a property or a site that may have historical significance. In this case, I already believe that the, if it goes for site redevelopment, I believe the proposed developer is considering historical act credits for helping for securing funding for the proposed redevelopment. In that case, the historical tax credit, you need to have an application to the National Park Service who works directly in consultation with the Main Historic Planning, Main Historic Planning Commission. And therefore, our requirements under Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act for the Brownfields funding is met by that other, all those activities going in for the historical act credit. So it kind of makes our life a little easier on the Brownfield side of things. If the city decides to demolish the building, then we'll have to do a specific request to the Main Historic Preservation Commission to confirm whether our proposed actions or cleanup actions under the Brownfields funding does or does not have an adverse effect. So again, that's something that we'll cross that bridge when we get there moving forward in this. So this is essentially the first start to look at the cleanup actions that are being proposed and to help the city decide. Again, like I said, we're going to get those cost estimates here in the next month or two so that we can provide those to the city to help the city counselors, you folks, as well as the public, help make a better informed business decision on whether it makes sense to redevelop the building, demolish the building, and in either case, either reuse scenario, what does that mean in terms of what the type of abatement of hazardous building materials needs to be completed? So with that, I'd like to open it up for some public comments and questions. With anybody who has questions right now, again, we'll record those questions. And if we don't have answers tonight, we'll make sure we follow up with some written answers that can be posted on the city's website or presented at the next council meeting.
Good, thank you. So we're going to keep this with the council at this point. So councilors, any questions or comments? Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just remembering back to last term, I think it was December of 2018, we received cost estimates about cleanup alternatives, but it was from a different firm. Can you speak to the difference between that work that we received last term and this now? Is it just the gap analysis? Is it more sampling? What's the difference?
So the prior feasibility study or analysis of Brownfields cleanup alternatives, that was done by Beacon Environmental Consultants, and I believe, and that was a requirement initially for going after the Brownfields Cleanup Grant directly to EPA. They had a requirement, when you apply for EPA funding directly to EPA, you need to do a public meeting and actually do a little preliminary feasibility study, analysis of Brownfields cleanup alternatives. And as part of that, there were some cost estimates that were completed for that report. And again, that was more of a preliminary step in order to catch the grant funds. Now that the city was awarded the EPA Cleanup Grant of $500,000, we now need to go through a formal process, this 30-day public comment period, and a more formal analysis of Brownfields cleanup alternatives. And what we mentioned earlier in the meeting is that since 2018 and today, we've gone through all of the prior historical environmental reports and identified a few data gaps. The roofing systems, like I said, were, even though there were some cost estimates generated in 2018, those were based on presumed asbestos in the roof. It was never confirmed. So before we move forward and started spending the EPA Brownfields grant funding or city funding on abating roof that may or may not have asbestos in it, we want to make sure we confirm that. So that's the data gap investigation that we're currently completing under the Andescoggin Valley Council of Governments Assessment Program. We're able to go out and do some additional assessment and confirmation sampling on the mill and some of the hazardous building materials. So we confirm that, so we can confirm our quantities and our estimates. So now we can go back out and get some contractor quotes. The other thing, the difference in that prior preliminary analysis of Brownfields cleanup alternatives, those were engineering estimates primarily. There was a few discussions with some local contractors on some cost estimates. But for the most part, it's an engineering estimate. And what we're proposing now is to actually reach out to some additional roofing contractors, to some environmental abatement contractors, maybe get them to do a quick walk through the mill. Again, this is all pre-bidding. We're not going, we haven't designed the final cleanup plan, and we're not going to bid, you know, competitive bidding for the project yet for the cleanup. But as part of our initial cost estimating, we felt it would probably be prudent to get some expertise and some experienced contractors to visit the site and to kind of give us some preliminary quotes to help us narrow and refine some of our engineering estimates that have been kind of thrown out there. There's been a lot of numbers that you guys can imagine over the last several years, from abatement and replacing the roofing systems to removing asbestos inside the building for encapsulating the PCBs. There's a wide range of costs that have been estimated for the lead-based paint, whether that's pressure washing and encapsulating the lead-based paint or doing full sandblasting and full removal of lead-based paint. So there's a wide range. So we want to make sure that, before we go out and get bids, we want to make sure that we understand what is positive, what is negative, and for the asbestos and lead-based paint and what those quantities are. So we're putting it a lot more in detail now to refine those numbers so that the city can be able to make better informed business decisions on the mill building moving forward.
Another thing is those 2018 costs did not include any consideration for the cost of demolition. So that's a cost that some of the city numbers that have been thrown around for demolition are rather outdated, especially given the current construction climate. Demolition was not considered when writing up the alternatives for the grant, but we know that the city is still deciding things. And so for you guys to have the information, we're getting those numbers grounded in reality, too.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I can ask one more question of Ms. McCarthy, where on the city website would folks go to submit this public comment? I haven't seen any, anything in the paper personally, but just curious if you could announce that.
To submit public comment, they can do it a few ways. They can call the city at 207-513-3126. That will bring you to the Economic Development Department. You can ask for me, Heidi McCarthy. You can also email the public comment email address for the city, which is publiccomment@louisstonmain.gov, no S, correct? Public comment, not plural, @louisstonmain.gov. If you want to view the APCA or any of the documents, the APCA is the Analysis of Brownfields Cleanup Alternatives. You can go to the Economic and Community Development website. And on the left, you'll see EPA Brownfields Cleanup Grant. You can click on that to view those documents. Or you can also email me at hmcarthy@louisstonmain.gov.
What was the name of that document? The reason why I found my way back to the December 2018 report was by doing those steps that you just said. So just in case folks are trying to look for this one in particular.
I will, I will look at that to make sure that it's updated, but the updated one should be on there. I will double-check that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? And I just have one question. So the report that was presented to the council says draft, and you've referred to it as a draft. Why is it still a draft? What's pending on that?
So the EPA requires us to, on the 30-day public comment and on the, it's a comment period on this report as it's draft. So we have to leave it draft during the public comment period so that we can receive public comments and possibly address comments if they impact our analysis in the report. If not, and, you know, sometimes it's just we provide some responses to comments or questions that come in, and it doesn't really require any formal changes to our report. Once the public comment period closes, we'll review any changes that are necessary to the document. We'll go back to EPA and Main DP with concurrence, and we'll get final approval from them. And once we do that, then we can finalize this report.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we'll turn this over to the public. Anyone attending this evening's meeting that may have comments related to Agenda Item 1, which is the public hearing for the Brownfields Cleanup Grant for Bates Mill #5, please raise your hand and we'll bring you into the meeting. Okay, seeing none. And if staff can just keep an eye on the attendees for just another moment or two, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for any questions or comments. Okay, seeing none. Both Sarah and Peter, thank you for taking the time this evening to attend our workshop, or I'm sorry, our meeting this evening. And once again, Lincoln and Heidi, we appreciate all the hard work Economic Development has been doing over the past year. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, okay. With that said, we're going to move to the work session. And will be Item A, which is passenger rail discussion. And I believe Economic Development will also be presenting this evening. Director Jeffers?
Yes, now, glad to have this opportunity. I know many of you over the years I've worked with on passenger rail. There was a major study done back in 2018 that I was one of the committee members on, providing oversight to the, to the consulting firm that was doing it. It was a $500,000 study funded primarily by Main DOT, but both Auburn and Lewiston each put in $50,000 towards that planning effort. And it sort of laid out some scenarios for us. And prior to COVID, there was talk of really trying to resurrect that. I know Mia Purcell with the Andescoggin, Oxford, Coas County. I'm never sure if I say that, Coas or Coos, I'm never sure which it is. But there's a rail coalition up there that has been trying to get rail expanded up there. Lewiston and Auburn are the first stops on the way to that area. Ultimately, the goal is to connect Boston and Montreal. This is one of the first steps along the way, though. Just before COVID, the chamber sort of said, yep, we'll convene a group. And then COVID happened, and all of us have had a pretty challenging, I keep thinking it was last year. Dennis reminded me the other day that that was actually 2019, like, that was not last year, it was two years ago. So at this point, there's some activity at the state level. There's a new bill, LD 991, which is talking about doing another study to connect Lewiston, Auburn with Portland. And it runs a little bit counter to what the study that I was participating in, which this one specifically says it should land at the Ocean Gateway, which is the eastern end of Portland, near the ferry terminal. The other study had said it should go to the Portland Transportation Center, which is currently located at Thompson's Point. That's where Amtrak passes through. They're in the, Portland's in the midst of looking to relocate that train station over to near St. Mercy's Hospital, St. Mercy Hospital, excuse me, Mercy Hospital on the Western Prom. So there's some movement there, but rail continues to, passenger rail continues to be of great interest to the area. To quickly summarize just a little bit of the study, which took about a year and a half, they did some 2025 project, year 2025 projections. And if you had 12 to 20 trips per day running between Lewiston, Auburn, and Portland, on the low side, they estimated that you would see 600 riders going each way. So 600 going down, 600 coming back up on the low side, or 800 riders a day each way on the high side of their estimate. If you're just doing more inner-city rail, which is when you're connecting Lewiston, Auburn to Portland, Portland to Boston, Lewiston, Auburn up to Montreal, this is really focused on the southern leg, but the four inner-city type trips, they expected ridership of 210 on the low side and 410, excuse me, 240 on the high side. By 2040, they thought ridership could increase if you had the commuter-type rail, the 12 to 20 trips. It was expected on the low side, you would see daily riders each way of 700, and on the high side, 1,900. The inner-city went from 210 for daily riders in 2025. The uh, inner city went from two hundred and ten uh, for daily riders in twenty twenty-five up to two fifty in twenty forty. And uh, inner city would just grow from two forty in twenty twenty-five up to three thirty in twenty forty. So the ridership increase is significantly higher if you're doing the uh, commuter type rail. The inner city, uh, and again, that was really just making that connection from, from Lewiston to Boston and could incorporate uh, you know, going beyond that down to Boston. It's uh, really, I think the study was a little bit surprised. They uh, expected it was going to be primarily intercity. Most rail studies have found that most uh, ridership, most people use the train for making transportation connections, going to uh, to uh, you know, sports events or cultural events in larger cities and just don't want to deal with drive that just soon relax on their way going back and forth. Uh, really what prompted the conversation tonight? As I made Dennis and Dale aware of uh, LD nine ninety-one and saying, you know, our council's really not all that well versed in, in what's going on. Passenger rail has been an idea floating around for, you know, fifteen, twenty years at this point. Uh, let's give them a bit of an update and, and realize that that was a very, very, very brief update. There's been a lot of work that's been done up to this point. But uh, the legislature at this point is looking at some, some rail options. LD nine ninety-one is the connection from Mount Lewiston Auburn on the St. Lawrence and Atlantic line. It would basically go from uh, downtown Lewiston to uh, on the Pan Am line. There's two rail lines, St. Lawrence and Atlantic in Pan Am. Pan Am is the active rail line currently. That's the one that comes over the bridge just above the falls, runs, runs behind uh, uh, the Royal Oak Room runs through Auburn. Uh, it's an active rail line. The St. Lawrence and Atlantic is not an active rail line currently south of here. It's actually owned by the state. Uh, it has not operated for quite some time. Uh, those two rail corridors really run more or less parallel, occasionally interweaving between, between here and Portland. The study I was on the committee for had recommended uh, that it's really Pan Am should be the primary line. Uh, that would allow you to connect to Boston, get on Amtrak. This uh, LD nine ninety-one is really saying it should go to the uh, Ocean Gateway Terminal in Portland. Uh, advantage of that is that it is uh, it's, it's much more the last mile connection, the, the walkability. If you are commuting from Lewiston Auburn, you were working at WEX or working at a big insurance company or a bank or whatever entity you might be working at down in the Portland area. If that port, if that group was located in the old port, it would be much easier to walk to it. Downside is if you wanted to go to Boston, you would need to uh, get off there and find your way over to somehow get over to the Portland Transportation Center, which is, you know, a couple of miles across town. Not impossible, but it's sort of what Boston suffers from, from the South, South Station, North Station. Uh, an alternative is you could uh, have a interlink at, with Amtrak as it comes down from Bronx, uh, from Brunswick at Yarmouth Junction. They could build another uh, station there. And so you could come down from Lewiston Auburn and get off at Yarmouth Junction, catch uh, the, the uh, down Easter as it goes on its way to get to Boston. So it's not impossible, but it's, it's just not as straightforward as you get on in Lewiston Auburn. You stay in your seat and you land in, you land in Boston. It's a one trip. Uh, so really wanted to lay this out. Uh, if you'd like me to, I can get into some of the costs associated with the different alignments. The, the study I participated in evaluated eight different configurations, different ways to get from here to there. Uh, the cost really ran from uh, if you just stayed on the Pan, uh, Pan Am line, uh, you know, leaving downtown Lewiston Auburn, went out to Danville Junction and just stayed on Portland Transportation Center. Estimated cost for rail improvements were one hundred, one hundred and eighty-nine to two hundred and thirty million dollars on the capital side. Uh, the second option that was considered was using uh, the St. Lawrence and Atlantic line uh, for a portion of that, which would go to Yarmouth Junction and then would connect with uh, the Pan Am line again. And go to the Portland Transportation Center. Those costs were estimated two hundred and seven to two hundred and fifty-four million. And the estimated costs to uh, get on the SLR line at uh, at Danville Junction and land at the Ocean Gateway was the most expensive of the three options. It was two hundred and forty-one to two hundred and ninety-five million dollars were the estimated costs. Operational cost, each, each of those options went from fifteen to nineteen million. Option two was sixteen to twenty million. Option three was seventeen to twenty-one million. So again, sort of as uh, Mr. Share was just saying with the Brownfields Alternative Analysis, these are not hard numbers. These are engineering estimates based on, you know, law and experience in the field. And by the time this all gets built, those numbers are certainly going to change, but that'll give you some sense of uh, of the kind of analysis that's gone to, gone forward to date. And I, I guess I, I could keep talking, but I think it, it might be best if I just uh, be quiet at this point. And really the question for the council is, is are you still enthused about passenger rail? Is this something you would like us to continue to, to pursue? And if you want us to take a stance or, or perhaps no stance, an LD nine ninety-one. So with that, I see lots of hands up. I'll be quiet.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilor Colley.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Um, first, I'm very excited to support this um, and send a unanimous support to the state legislature. Um, one quick question, Lincoln. So who's, who's planning to pay for this feasibility analysis, the LD nine nine?
LD nine nine one is, I believe is a resolve uh, asking the state of Maine to pay for it. So the city sees you would not be asked to participate. At least, you know, it's not passed yet. It's simply uh, in the legislature, but uh, it would be the state DOT.
Oh, um, another question. So what I, you said that LA paid like fifty thousand and fifty thousand, um, hundred thousand. So what happened to that study? What, where was the disconnect? Um?
Uh, it's, it's not disconnected. I mean, it is still very much uh, available. It's there. I, I've got copies. It's an enormous file, so I can't just email it. I mean, it like lives on the shared drives. At the city, uh, I can send uh, some, you know, sort of executive summaries of it, some of the analysis that went out. Uh, but really the next steps are, okay, we, we've got an analysis here. We need to really start dialing in on what stations should be there. Let's, you know, let's have communication with other communities along the rail line and determine if uh, if they also want rail. And if that could have some influence on what rail line is chosen as well. You know, and start dialing in those cost estimates. And it's also a matter of chasing uh, you know, having a project that's ready to go that can attract federal dollars, uh, because all this is study until you've got a project that's really well conceived, uh, is well justified. And uh, at that point, you can, you can start getting momentum behind this. I uh, I included in my memo, I think it was about twenty years from the time uh, making the connection from Boston to Portland was conceived, you know, and they thought it would happen in a few years. It was better part of twenty years is actually what it took to, took to make it come to fruition.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm, I'm very excited to support this. I think, you know, towns across surrounding Lewiston Auburn are, you know, a lot of the time forgotten and um, we need to like support them. I saw in the study like Bangor, Brunswick, Augusta was also thinking about, about this too. So if major cities step up, we should as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Director Jeffers. Um, similar to last time, the, in the last term of council, um, I remain super enthusiastic and supportive of this. Um, I think it's really great that Portland, um, you know, comes from Senator Chipman of Cumberland County. And so they're recognizing the value that this could bring to their area as well as ours. Um, being in the, the millennial profession, young professionals group, um, age group and working group. I, I just think this could add such value um, to our community. And um, I am a person who hates driving and hates trying to park in busy places, um, such as Portland and Boston. And so um, if I could just chill out and read a book or interact with friends, if I'm on my way um, to either commute or a, a night out, um, things like that. I think there, there's such opportunity. Um, I, I can't see why we wouldn't support it when the state is going to do the allocation as well. Um, and so um, anyway, we can be supportive. Um, I'm happy to submit personal testimony and also uh, testify in front of the Transportation Committee if that would be helpful to you all. I will say, um, I sit on the MMA Legislative Policy Committee and they have not taken a stance on this bill yet. Um, they are just tracking it according to my conversation with someone there today. So, um, just, just a heads up, they're not pushing for it, but um, I, I'm not sure if they're going to take a stance going forward.
Thank you, Councilor Ray. And Link, just to clarify, so LD nine ninety-one i- is not, the, the study that was completed would not support LD ninety-one because of the, the, the tracks of the location at the end from, in the area of Paul. And is that a fair statement or not?
You want that, that's a fair statement. I think a lot of the analysis uh, would, would carry over, you know, as far as the, the demand. Uh, you know, there'll be slight differences on whether the landing at Ocean Gateway or, or Portland Transportation Center. Uh, what struck me when I first saw the bill, I was enthused and excited to say, my God, is, is, as Councilor Raja said, a, a Portland legislator is the one who brought forth this, this legislation. It was just that having it land at the Ocean Gateway was really counter to all the prior work, which actually I included in my memo to you all. It sort of explicitly said, take the Ocean Gateway options off the table. They're more expensive, they're more complicated. There's a rail uh, bridge that needs re, needs to be rebuilt by B and M baked beams. You've got uh, you know, the eastern end of, of uh, of uh, Portland is, is pretty well developed at this point. The, the SLR line had uh, I believe was sold when the bridge was built back in ninety eighty-five. So you've got lots of development recreational that has occurred in that southern side of Portland, but it could be a challenging sight. So the sort, being more expensive with all those challenges, the committee I was on said, let's focus on the Portland Transportation Center, those options. Although of the three that came forward, one of them was the SLR line. So.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Link, if I could, you throw up quite an uh, conglomeration of figures there, all ending in millions. Uh, what could the city perhaps logically expect to look at for its share in developing this if, if we were to do it? Is, is this going to be a major project for the city as well?
That is a really good question, and I do not know the answer to it. Uh, and I, it may change. I mean, I would look to Dale to a degree, having been at DOT, he might have a better sense of what's typically expected. Uh, I know you weren't on the rail side, Dale, but uh, what, is there something, can you add anything to that?
Yeah, I think one thing we can share, um, about, I don't know, six, eight, nine months ago. At the time, we asked um, the DOT for what federal programs and how those matches and which ones would be eligible for um, really the results of the last study. Um, and I don't have those in front of me, but that is certainly something we can share with council. And it will, it'll show you the federal programs that existed at the time, which I still believe exist today. And how each one works and how each one might apply to this, to, 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 to one of these um, projects, if that's helpful.
And, and Dale, I think what Councilor Clement was also asking was sort of is there, do those grant funds typically require a pretty significant local match?
Many of them do, yes.
Okay.
And it sounds like we could be looking at double what our annual budget would be on the city side of things, just to get involved in this. Is that a?
I think it really depends on the programs and the assortment of programs that apply. Cause some of the programs apply by themselves, some apply in an aggregate, and then the state has some funding as well, um, through their multi-votal program. So I, I really think it's how you aggregate them. So that, that's a maybe a more complicated question than, than could be answered here right the second until there's a project on the table.
One thing that perhaps the city could do, if this uh, looks like it may go into fruition, perhaps could check with Dover, New Hampshire. They uh, got involved in this project. I'm not sure what the local costs were, but I do believe uh, that there might have been more significant costs than were originally uh, put forth. Um, there's, there's been some issues down there on it. I just, I mean, I'm all for this. If it can be done and can be done economically uh, feasibly. But I don't see us uh, mortgaging the city to get involved in it quite yet. We're not at that point. I don't believe fiscally to do that sort of thing. But if it's something that's viable and we can get involved in, then I probably would sign on to it. I thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I guess as far as guidance goes, um, I'm still very much supportive of the idea in general of bringing passenger rail to Lewiston Auburn. Um, I don't see that support waning at any time soon. So um, just a general idea. Keep on pushing until, you know, my entire life, that's what it takes. Um, I'm committed to that. So um, I guess the more specifics for this bill, I don't, at this point, have much of a preference as to where it, I guess it ends up. Um, there are people who have been more involved in this who probably have better opinions on this than I do. So I'm not gonna, I don't want to give you any guidance that honestly I just don't know enough about. So I kind of trust you guys' judgment on where you think it should end up. Um, and what the most, you know, logical and, you know, realistic option is. Um, so I guess in regards to supporting the, the bill, the LD nine ninety-one, I think. You know, if, if we pass, if, if a resolution comes to us asking to support it, I could support it. Um, I don't want it to mean that, you know, we prefer a certain way or another way. Um, and I mean, I guess my preference too, if it could help, would be to try and do the St. Lawrence uh, rail line and meet up at, like, what is it, Danville Junction or something around there?
Yeah, I mean, it, uh, it's Pan Am from downtown Lewiston Auburn out to Danville Junction. And at that point, you can either stay on the Pan Am line or get on St. Lawrence and Atlantic. And then they more or less run parallel to each other, you know, through uh, New Gloucester down, down to Portland. One goes through Yarmouth Junction, and that's when they cross again. Um, but it, it's, it's confusing. I look at a rail map and I've looked at them many times and my head still swims a little bit and I have to check, check to see which, which line belongs to who. Uh, I, I, I see Tony Donovan is one of the attendees. Tony knows uh, the rail infrastructure intimately around the area. And uh, I'm sure he, what, what, when we get to public comment, I'm sure he can perhaps inform that, better inform you on that.
Oh, okay, right on. Um, yeah, um, also, um, I guess more of like a general statement too, you know, the state's really neglected Lewiston Auburn area and this region of the state for quite a while. Um, especially service center communities, but ours in particular. So as far as I'm concerned, um, you know, if the state wants to bond at the, you know, two hundred and fifty million for this, I think that's just, I think we deserve that. I think it's going to be good for our local economy. Um, especially the way that we pay disproportionate amounts on the highways for the tolls. Um, so I, I think this is very much something that we not only need, could be beneficial for us, but something that we deserve as a city and a community and a region of the state.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Joy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm all for it as well. Uh, I was for it for quite a while. As a matter of fact, when I was in the legislature, I was involved in some of the studies. Um, especially up in the uh, ski areas and, and so on and so forth. Uh, I'd like to bring your attention to LD nine ninety-one. At the very bottom of the summary, uh, it states that the resolve directs the Department of Transportation to appropriate a one-time fund of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh, for the feasibility analysis. Uh, so I, I guess that's where the money would come from. I understand that they uh, they do have other funds uh, that they collect from uh, rental vehicles, I believe. Uh, that may be directed in that direction as well, but that would have to be uh, checked and uh, to see if that is correct. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Jelineus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I, I fully support LD nine ninety-one. It was my understanding that that amount of money that you referenced, um, Councilor Joy was really just to complete feasibility study or feasibility analysis. But the way I look at that is it just gets us that much closer to eventual commuter and passenger train. Um, you know, I, I'm pretty excited about that prospect. It goes hand in hand with a lot of things that we talked about as a, as a council on Saturday at our retreat. So um, that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Uh, although typically uh, we, we do not do public comment on workshop items. Uh, there are lots of, a few people in the uh, attendees list that are uh, active folks engaged in uh, advocating for the railroad. So I would like to offer the opportunity, but I will just remind uh, public commenters that uh, we have a hard and fast three-minute rule on public comment. And I'd ask you folks to us, to respect the work of the council and stick to three minutes or under. And with that, and I'm, I'm saying that because Tony, I've met with Tony many times and he could go on an hour about railroads. So three minutes, Tony. All right. So with that, if uh, uh, Dale, you could bring uh, Mr. Donovan in. Uh,
Am I on?
Yes, you are. Good evening, Tony.
Hey, thank you all. It's really good to see the support here. And that is uh, you know, I just asked.
I just asked, will the city of Lewiston, as in the past, provide testimony and support of LD 991? I have great respect for Link. He's been a great supporter all along, and he's a great asset to this region. I'm going to make a couple corrections to his description of connections to the rail. The purpose of reconstruction of the state-owned railroad is not just to get the chain to downtown Lewiston, but in fact, the, and I'm going to look right at your memo here where you say, of course, I lost it. The direct link to Amtrak would be lost, resulting in a similar situation as Boston's north-south dysfunction. Interesting word. That is not an accurate statement. The Amtrak service could leave Boston, travel through Portland, take the main line through Yarmouth Junction, take a left turn and continue up this rail, and then a right turn on his last six miles into Lewiston. The point here is reconstruction of the St. Lawrence and Atlantic Railroad, the state-of-made own railroad to downtown Portland, justifies the investment because we've just connected the two largest urban centers in the state. But the reconstruction itself allows for both Amtrak push-pull locomotive service and all-day commuter rail service. It also allows for the, by the way, freight rail, which we envision happening at night. The separation of the passenger rail from the freight rail scores high in federal funding applications. In the situation where the St. Lawrence and Atlantic is used, we can separate passenger from freight for up to 25 miles. The use of the St. Lawrence and Atlantic includes identifying, and I think someone says, let's bring everybody into the mix, up to seven train station sites that were not identified in the LA study. If there is a flaw to that study, is that it did not talk about train stations, as our link says, is easy-walking distance to town centers. And that is the goal of evaluating the St. Lawrence and Atlantic. LD 991 will evaluate the St. Lawrence and Atlantic in a way that gives you what you want, direct connections to Amtrak, and put in place a plan that the state put forward in an alternative modes analysis that was finished in 2011, which you all participated in, I think, for running these commuter rail between the two towns. So it does both, but most important of all, it does it. We consider it's a shovel-ready project. We believe the feasibility analysis will draw on the information provided in the LA study, the information provided in the 2011 Jacobs Report study, and combine that information will give us a feasibility analysis to place us in position for federal funding. I'm trying to talk fast because I know I only have a couple minutes. I just want to mention that the eastern prom rail, you use the word abandoned. Please don't use that word abandoned in railroad jargon. That is a Federal Surface Transportation Board decision. That is a very complicated decision. And none of the SLR between Portland and Auburn has been abandoned, including the bridge, which has been priced twice. By the way, the pricing that came out of the 2011 report was 160 million. The pricing that came out of the VHP report was 300 million. This feasibility analysis should hopefully clarify exactly what those hundreds of millions are. And then just one other touch is that the cities are not responsible for state highways or state railways. The construction restoration, let's call it 300 million dollars, can be used by leveraging probably 20 to 30% of state, state, not local money. And we envision private investors being a major part of the matching funds. And all, please do keep in mind, this is an environmentally clean transportation system that fits directly into the definition of what we expect to be as much as $4 trillion in funding that's going to come down to places like Lewiston, Maine, to help us boost our economy, rebuild our infrastructure, address clean climate. There's an opportunity now like never before, and LD 991 does no harm, but might indeed do much good.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Tony, and I see that you sent in additional information through the public comment, so that's appreciated.
If I might, that was from AvCOG, and I noticed that you sent it to me and not you, and I heard that address just now, so I sent it to you.
All right, very good. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you very much again. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else in our attendees list that would like to make a quick public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for any final questions or comments. All right, thank you very much, Director.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I apologize, but someone just.
Just raising a hand. Okay, I see that. Thank you. Michael Koch. Good evening, sir.
Hey, folks, how are you?
Good, thank you. You're all set to go.
Thanks for letting me have a little word. You know, as some of you might know me, I've been involved in a few different organizations in Lewiston-Auburn. And part of my involvement is to increase the awareness of the arts and everything because that's where mostly I hang. However, it's the entertainment life, the nightlife, and all that sort of stuff, plus more people coming to Lewiston-Auburn that we want to build our tax base. I mean, I just feel that that's just an easy, easy no-brainer, right? However, just, just having this study, continuing the study, finishing the study, this is a great thing to do to at least show other towns and even other states, look, we have a little bit of a progress thing going on. We are looking at rail. It's a good time for it right now, especially if there's a good infrastructure plan happening from the federal level. And having this commute from Portland to Lewiston-Auburn is just going to be an amazing thing for the area and for people in Portland. If they want to just live up here, work in Portland, there's just a lot of good pluses about it. Well, I can't, I can't, I can't see anything that's negative about it. It's just, it's just a fun thing, and I think once it starts to be, starts to move more and more ahead, more and more people are going to love it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, and you brought up some really good points, especially tying in nightlife and arts and culture. So thank you, sir. Any other comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, bring it back to the council. Any final questions or comments? All right, thank you. So with that, we'll move to our final workshop item, B, Presentation Concern and Jumpstart Me. This presentation will be from the Downtown Business Association, and I believe Shanna Cox will also be participating. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you very much for attending the meeting this evening, and we're looking forward to the presentation.
I appreciate that. I think Michael Dosty is going to lead us off. I'll give him a minute to turn on his camera and be welcomed as well.
Yeah, he's not a tech guy, is he? Oh, there he is.
There he is. Hi, Michael.
Hello. All right, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, city councilors, administrators. Heather, great to see you. My name is Mike Dosty. I'm the board chairman of the Downtown Lewiston Association. With me tonight is Shanna Cox, President and CEO of the LA Metro Chamber of Commerce. And we're going to talk about a new program that we've been working on, Jumpstart Me. So Jumpstart Me is an economic development tool that exemplifies what public and private partnership should be. The Downtown Lewiston Association, the Chamber, Austin Associates, Isaacson and Raymond, Rink Advertising, Xantin Company, and Anders Goggin Bank have all come together committing significant resources to make this program happen. So 2020 was devastating. I mean, absolutely devastating to almost all retail and hospitality sectors and small business in general. There were just too many unknowns. There was a lot of fear. I mean, there was nothing, there was no end in sight. I'm not telling you anything you don't already know. But COVID-19 is now presenting Lewiston and actually all municipalities with an opportunity because here in 2021, there is light at the end of the tunnel. You know, the combination of vaccines becoming more widespread available, better understanding of the disease, and really just to pent-up desires of everyone to get back to normal. I mean, these combined create the perfect opportunity for businesses and entrepreneurs to start exploring opportunities that were put on hold for a year, a year and a half now. So enter Jumpstart Me. So Jumpstart Me is a competition-based incentive program to attract businesses to Lewiston's downtown business district. We've identified some of the largest barriers to starting or growing a business and using local and private resources. We've created what I believe is the largest incentive package for small businesses this city has seen in over a decade. Applicants will fill out low-barrier applications, giving us some basic information about their business plans, their models, their finances. These applications will undergo an initial analysis so that we can evaluate their long-term viability and their suitability for our community. And then the most qualified applicants will fill out full applications that will get into the detailed business and financial plans. This information is going to be used to determine the competition finalists. The last stage of this program is probably the most fun part of the program, where if we have a good number of qualified applicants, then we can do a public presentation event to really engage the community with a panel of judges and culminate with the announcement of a winner. So Jumpstart Me will utilize the marketing resources of both the Chamber and the Downtown Lewiston Association to generate statewide and regional buzz around this program and the city of Lewiston. So now I'm going to turn it over to Shanna to talk a little bit more.
Thanks. And, Mr. Mayor, if there is cause for you to stop us, please do let us know. We're also happy to take questions at the end, but we'll continue on unless you indicate otherwise. I'd like to take just a minute to talk about some of the advantages that we see this having, both to the city as well as to the municipality, and I think those are both areas of benefit. The first that I'd call out is information. The pre-application and the full application process is going to provide really valuable information to the city's Economic Development Department, to council, and to staff to really understand what are barriers, what's the current market, what's the demand, what's the interest, and area preferences. And so this will be vital information that'll be shared to the city just by participating. We'll also be able to share referrals, and so that's kind of the second stage. It's not just what we're hearing, but we'll actually be able to connect applicants, successful or otherwise, directly to economic development staff. So this is kind of a proactive economic development strategy that doesn't relate to some of the other activities that you've had to fund or be specific for. This is kind of a free partnership. There's strategic timing, and I think Mike touched on this. I know what we're seeing as we talk to businesses. There were some businesses that did close over the last year. There's some businesses that are still teetering on the edge. I would note the shuttered venue grant is out April 8th, and so folks should look into that. But we know that businesses are right there. We also know that some businesses have found a sweet spot. They have adapted, they've found a niche market, they have changed their thinking and adapted their business model and have found success. And that is in even the hardest-hit sectors. And so this opportunity reflects making sure that this city and this district comes out of what has been a hard time with a proactive plan to fill any vacant storefronts and to support business growth and keep that area vibrant, right? Lastly, there's an added benefit for everybody about promotion for the region. The marketing plan that Downtown Lewiston Association and the Chamber have put together gives us an opportunity on many fronts, in earned media and beyond, to tell the story of why Downtown Lewiston is a place to locate your business. And there's going to be ripple effect benefits and external benefits that you're all going to see from that. I think that's a pretty exciting advantage. There's another piece that we want to talk about, which is the capacity and commitment. I think you've already heard from Michael, and hopefully you're hearing from me, that the Chamber and the Downtown Lewiston Association are committed to this. And there are other partners committed to bring really tangible resources. And the way the private sector has kind of stepped in to say, we want to see another successful business, and we have the skills or the expertise or the capacity to help is part of why this is exciting and can be successful. But I would go beyond that. The Chamber is going to bring some of the administrative capacity, some of our marketing capacity to bear, the ability to manage the project really from the very beginning of promotion through the application stage, through the analysis, business support stage, decision-making, and then supporting not just the applicant or applicants that are successful, but beyond. So that kind of continued follow-on support that's so key wherever they locate. Those are some of the capacities that we're going to bring. I think Mike will outline some of the others that you're aware of. And so that's just a touch of what we see as the advantages and the capacity. Mike, do you want to speak next a little bit more about some of the funding that's coming there?
Sure. So I apologize if I have been talking very fast, but I'm at work at 7 o'clock at night and the heat is off, so it's getting cold. And so I'm talking a little bit faster, but if you need me to slow down, just let me know. So I think an important thing is, you know, here we are, we're approaching the city with this program, and we're asking for a partnership in it. And the question is, like, well, what is, what is the city funding? How is that going to come into play? So let me backtrack and just say that when I put together an event for coordination or program like this, you build the framework, and then you play the devil's advocate to your own program. When we did that for this program, we came up with actually two worst-case scenarios. One worst-case scenario is very obvious. It's what happens if you have no qualified or suitable applicants? Maybe you've got a number of applicants, but their business plan needs more development or they need stronger finances. But you just don't have a business that you have faith is going to, is going to be sustaining for the next several years. That's a, that's a worst-case scenario, and that's, that's very possible. But the second one is actually, what happens if you have several qualified and suitable applicants? I mean, welcoming one new business to downtown is great, but this program, as you can see from the outline that you've been provided, is geared for really a single business. So if we have several suitable and really qualified businesses who are desiring to be in our downtown, and we can say yes to one, but we literally have to turn away several others, that's not a win by my standards. That's, that's a really tremendous, I mean, a tremendous opportunity that's been just wasted. And it's an opportunity that would just fall into our laps from just having this program. So, I mean, this is the big reason why we're here, speaking to you, to invite the city of Lewiston to partner in this program so that we collectively can, we can exploit the maximum amount of opportunity that this program creates. And I'm not going to get into the different scenarios of how the city's funding would be used because it's pretty, it's pretty articulated in your packets. But if you have any questions towards the end, we'll be happy to address them. Shanna, did you want to kind of?
Yeah. Well, I think just anticipating some of the concerns that any of you in the council might have, we just wanted to kind of preempt some of the things we've thought through. One is, what an investment, 5,000 or 10,000, what's the ROI on that? And, you know, we've named a couple of the advantages, but kind of beyond that, it's replicable. And so what we're doing here, if it, if it is successful or if the lessons are learned from it, it's something that could be applied to other business districts within the citywide as well. And so I think it's a good place to pilot and experiment when you have this level of support. Take that learning and think about it as kind of another tool in the economic development toolkit that the city has. The other thing that I know is important in any type of public funding, and I think, you know, our city does a great job stewarding public money, is our commitment to transparency and kind of outlined in there. And for folks who, at home, who might not have read the documents in advance, there is a request to have a city staff and a city counselor with business experience participate in the decision-making process. So that's just one of the ways in which we are committed to transparency. And I think that's a really important piece around learning from this and figuring out whether it makes sense or not. And so those are kind of two things we wanted to point out that viewers at home might not know about if they hadn't read it, or you guys might have done all of your reading so long ago, you needed a reminder. So those are two points that we wanted to make. I know we're going to wrap up soon so that we can hear some questions, which it seems like you are holding. And so, Michael, was there anything else you wanted to add?
Well, I mean, I didn't, I didn't want to do a recap on the nightmare that was 2020 and its effects on small businesses, even on our own downtown. But I did want to reinforce the opportunity that we are, we are currently with right now. Kind of seeing that light at the end of the tunnel and really coming out of this and, and having investors and entrepreneurs and developers and, and business owners starting to look at, all right, where are we going to grow and where can we expand? Business owners starting to look at, all right, where, where are we going to grow and where, where can we expand? The other thing I did want to acknowledge is that this is a, probably a remarkably unorthodox request. One, because we're breaking the golden rule, which you're never supposed to ask the city of Lewiston for any kind of funding. But. I think in, in doing so, we're, we're asking for, we're, we're offering an opportunity. That has safeguards in place. As you can see in the write-up. If the program is not successful, then the funding that if the, this council should allocate funding to this program. And it's not successful. That request is rescinded. And that's something that I think is an unusual thing for a marketing opportunity. But it's something that we recognize. Just how important it is to be good stewards of the taxpayer funding. So. I think that's all I wanted to touch on. If there were any questions or Shanna, if you had anything else you wanted to add?
Okay, thank you. So. Administrative DOTA, can you just share, so the ask is for between five and $10,000, correct? Just clarifying that more for public. And then administrative DOTA, if you could just kind of lay out what the process would be for that.
So that request has actually already been put in with our other. Cash requests that we do receive or donation requests such as this that we receive. And you as a council will be taking that up through the budget process. All of those requests that we've workshopped on the April 13th budget workshop, and then ultimately decided on through the budget process.
Thank you. So Shanna and Michael, that was a really good presentation. It's almost like you get excited just hearing this stuff. So I just want to acknowledge that. And with that said, I'll turn it over to the council, Councilor Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to Shanna and Mike for all of the great information that was in the packet. I felt like you anticipated. You've been here so many times for so many different things. You anticipated a lot of the questions I would ask. I do want to express one thing that just like isn't sitting right with me is the city councillor having to run a business. I think I represent that district and I work for a nonprofit, but I think I, I and councillors before me have really gone. Above and beyond to try to understand that work and do some translation between the businesses and the municipality. So it's just like needling me a little bit that that opportunity would not be open to all councillors. For their, their work and input. So I'd like to just see that eligibility changed. And then if you guys could speak to how the city representative would be chosen, would it be you two folks deciding, is there? The whole board, that sort of thing. I think it's important that you've talked about that oversight and transparency, but just curious how, how you get there.
I, I will let, I'll let him answer that, but I would just note, I love the idea where there's so many of you excited that we have to use a process to whittle down who would participate. I just love that in and of itself. I think that's great. And I just want to say that out loud. Sorry, Mike, go ahead.
So actually, yeah, we didn't anticipate, we didn't anticipate multiple councillors that wanted to participate in that role. So I guess I would, I would put it up to, put it on your shoulders. We'll let you guys find it out if that's, if that's a desire. I did want to just briefly touch on your concern about the stipulation about having business experience. And, and that wasn't intended to be a dig on anybody, but rather. The, the role that this is, that the councillor would be taking on is. Is looking at a business's finances and understanding and, and business models and understanding. How that translates to long-term viability. And that was the only motivation for putting that kind of stipulation in is. So, yeah.
We did discuss district representation and felt that would be very targeted and exclusive to everybody else. So we did not decide to put that in there. Yeah, good point.
Yeah, I think I'm just trying to look at it through the lens of. What an opportunity for someone on the municipal side to also learn about that with the support. I think, you know, if you have the Chamber and the DLA behind it, you know, you have a lot of business experience. And what wonderful participation from Zan and Isaacson Raymond and, and all those folks who are listed here as. What I assume would be both sponsors and mentors of this, this business. So I just would continue to push that that's open to everyone. And, you know, we have to duke it out, we have to duke it out.
Yeah, there'll be no duking out. I'll say councillor, anything else? Okay, thank you. Councillor Delinus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am completely jazzed about this. Thank you for that presentation, Shannon and Mike. I think this is just off the charts exciting. And for me, what struck me as I listened to the idea. You know, is the timing of this. I mean, you know, as a community, we've been resilient in terms of just trying to be creative about making our way through this pandemic. And this is really, the timing could not be more perfect. If there's a way we can make this work financially, then I'm going to be behind it 100%. Because I think it says a lot, says a lot as a community that we're doing something like this. I mean, naturally, you know that I would jump on an opportunity to get involved in this in a heartbeat, because I think it's just really important. I, I was kind of curious, I, I don't know if I could just ask, I. I was looking at like some of the, you know, presenting like a business plan, financials, blah, 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 protected timelines. But have you developed anything more specific around how the winner, is that the right word? Would you say winner? Yeah. How the winner would be chosen?
Can I offer more on that, Michael?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, so not our first contest. We run Top Gun here at the Chamber. And so, so we're pulling on that expertise. I, I would say that the criteria needs to hit on a couple of things, and we want the criteria to be location-specific and informed. So that's kind of the, the piece when you hear Mike talk about not just. The ability to survive in the district, but thrive in the district and to make sure that it's complementary. And supportive of kind of like the general feel and vibe and local economy. So there's, there's got to be some criteria that's specific. I would say we haven't finalized the scoring rubric, for example. But there's, there's a couple of different programs that we pulled from that are specific to different aspects of business model, venture capital needs, capital needs. You know, I think it's really going to have to depend, the criteria would be built before final decisions are made and applicants are put through it. But there's a, there's a little bit ahead, and I think there's some input that we're waiting on from DLA members to. Around some of the priorities for the business that will be the most successful and complementary. So in progress, but informed by best practices that are in place. Yeah, it's a great question.
Thank you. Just really kudos to the work behind this. I mean, this in and of itself is very entrepreneurial. And I'm just really excited to hear more about it.
Hey, thank you. Councillor Patengill?
Thank you. And thanks to you, Shanna and Mike. It's good to see you again, Mike. It's been too long since we've had you in, in chambers. I don't know what. What, you know, council session would be without Mike coming in at least once. I, I appreciate and I love the strategery, you know, behind this targeted approach. I just hope you guys have more locations already ready to go. I do think this will be highly successful. I've always talked about how much Lewiston would benefit from an incubator, and I think this is a good step towards that direction. I'm excited to see, you know, what comes out of this. And I'm, you know, supportive of doing the $10,000. I think it'll go. A lot further. So thank you. Thank you very much for this.
Hey, thank you. Councillor Jensen?
Actually, Mark, if I could quickly just comment on that. You mentioned lining up other locations. One of the things that we are doing because we are, we are anticipating a very successful program. You don't plan, you don't plan something like this and then expect it to not do well. But we are actually working with a local commercial broker. Who is doing an audit of the downtown business districts available retail spaces. To determine their location. You know, their square footage and, you know, the stipulations from the different landlords so that we can very quickly pivot if we need to. To be as accommodating as possible. I mean, this program is, is geared around the Hartley block. Because of the good faith that the Xantin company is, is demonstrating. But we also recognize that we might have the perfect business. That hits every nail on the head, but they need 2,500 square feet. You know, this particular space is not that size. So we need to be ready for that kind of situation. And we're already in preparation of it.
All right, thank you, Mike. Councillor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I could see myself supporting this. I mean, Downtown Lewiston Association does really good work. They make the downtown area look nice. They draw a lot of people to it. You guys pay a lot in property taxes too. So, I mean, the idea of allocating 10 grand in one of our, you know, yearly budgets to them for whatever they want, I'd be okay with. So, I mean, on that alone, I could see myself definitely supporting this. Definitely encourage the organization, the association's good work. I'll be honest, anyone else supporting this though, putting this forward, I don't think this would be a good idea and I would not be supportive of it. I guess I have some concerns if the goal is to fill a vacant storefront, then the city giving up $10,000 in public money. You know, taxpayer dollars to do so. I don't think it's a good strategy for the city. It doesn't represent organic growth. It's a subsidy basically, acting in that sense. Was a TIF granted to the Hartley block? Dennis?
I, you know what, I'd honestly have to.
Heather is strongly nodding.
For her box to see if I could see a nodding head. So yes, there was a TIF.
Yeah. So I mean, you know, there's already a TIF in place. I guess it's just a little bit frustrating as a councillor to see a project be given a TIF and then not being able to fill a storefront. You know. And certainly gives me pause going forward on, you know, future projects. So I guess I used to don't like to see that. So I guess the project on its own of just filling a storefront, to me, doesn't justify spending $10,000 of taxpayer money. No matter what I like to see it expanded to fill other vacant storefronts in the city. I don't think we should be, you know, paying $10,000 ahead just to fill storefronts. I think if we boost the city's, I can, you know, local economy organically, then those places are going to fill up on their own. There's going to be a lot more growth too. So I just think we need to create the conditions for organic growth. So that being said though, I do want to make it clear that I probably will end up supporting the project just in my support of the, the association itself. You guys do great work. If you ask for more money, I'd probably still support it. Thank you for all that you guys do. I do want to look for ways to support you guys more because I think the city should. Especially in differentiating your part of the city from other parts of the city. You know, saying that the Tree Street neighborhood is the same as downtown Lisbon Street or the Riverfront Island. It's just not, it's not the same. It's not good for you guys. It's not good for the city as a whole. It's not good for our identity. So, yeah, so I appreciate you guys, but just, I guess those are my concerns. So I'm open to any suggestions anyone has going forward, but that's where I'm at right now.
Hey, thank you. And I know you spoke really highly about the Downtown Business Association. Which had done incredible work over the last few years, but let's not forget LA Metro Chamber, one of the largest chambers in the state. And really have really rocked it since Shanna took over in her position. So good, good work happening. I think Councillor Khalid?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you both, Shanaya and Michael, for this presentation. I'm very excited about this program. One question is, if it is successful, are you planning on like bringing it back, the program? And if yes, then are you planning like for that $10,000 that you initially are asking from the city, then maybe getting it from private donors or from other resources?
So to very quickly answer your question, absolutely. I would love to bring this back. As a matter of fact. This was, this is a concept that isn't entirely new. What we're doing is, if some of you recall in, I think it was 11 years ago, the LA AGC. They introduced the Launch LA Program, which had some very distinct similarities to this program, but there were some very distinct differences. I remember being a. Young jack wagon in Lewiston, running around, having fun with my friends. And I remember hearing about this on a regular basis. Their marketing around it was spectacular. The, the result of that program was Revelation Massage, if that rings any bells about the program to some. Ever since that program that resulted in Revelation Massage. I have asked, well, I've asked myself, I've asked, you know, Chip Morrison at the time. How come we're not doing this on an annual basis? Why was this program just like a one-off or a two-off? Why is this not a regular thing? And, and putting together this program, I've recognized it's, it's, it's taxing. It's a lot of work. It's, it's a lot of, it's a big ask from all of these private partners. But I would love to see a program like this be a staple in Lewiston. That, that when a business, no matter where you are in the state, if you're thinking about opening a business. Like you actually take a look at Lewiston, you pause when it comes to Lewiston because. Oh, there's a, there's some incentive package that's going on in Lewiston. But then you actually look at the assets that we do have. I think it is a tremendous attraction to. Well, the assets that we do have. So, so to somewhat answer your question, yes, I would love to see this be an annual program. But it is contingent on the generosity of our partners, the generosity of sponsors, current and future. But if we have an overwhelming success this year, then I can guarantee that I'm going to be working hard to, to make this happen with Shanna. Again, as many times as we possibly can.
If, if I might add to that, Councillor Khalid is that this year in its unproven, out-of-the-gate optimism and excitement. We're already matching, should the city invest 10,000, a one to seven. Little bit beyond. And so there's already significant private dollars in, and that number doesn't factor in the in-kind and. What was it? Jackrabbit energy of Mr. Dossie or myself or the Chamber? And so, so I would say if we can prove this year that the recognition that our private sector partners get and that the city gets makes it worthwhile, it'll make it very easy. To get additional sponsors and/or partners from the private sector to support, I think, either a repeat or expansion. And, and I would just add to that, Councillor Jensen, just simply that I, I won't, from my perspective. Consider this program a success if we've simply filled the storefront. If we've added a thriving business that's paying taxes, sales taxes, employing two to five people in the next year and makes it beyond the year. You've done a lot more, forget about the circulating dollar in the local economy than just fill a storefront. And from my perspective, that's my goal in this program. It can't be possible if we don't also fill a storefront because we, you know, have a business location. But I think that's part of what's. Exciting about the possibility of what this could be this year and beyond.
Thank you. Councillor Ray?
Sorry to jump back in, but just some other thoughts. Now that I've heard from some other councillors, I think Councillor Jelineus talking about timing also prompted me to think about that. The new foot patrol down on Lisbon Street has been reinstated for another year, given its huge success over the past year. And I think that will, will help a new business feel more comfortable down there. I do think we need to work on parking enforcement more so that we're turning over their spots in a consistent manner. And not just having business owners parked in spots down there for whole days and whole weeks. So I will, I've raised that privately, but now raising it publicly that we need to really be on that for that section of Lisbon Street. And I think too, you know, as Councillor Jelineus alluded to, and to Councillor Jensen's point about. Why are we incentivizing this now and spending the public dollar to do so? I think, given the really traumatic. Events of the past year for persons, but also for businesses. I think, thinking of starting a business or locating a business in this area, it's a heavy ask. I mean, what if it doesn't? Succeed? And what if they don't have the right supports? And so I think this program has that wraparound effort to it. With some of the in-kind services with the city contributing and with municipal oversight. So I just wanted to just toss that, those thoughts out there as well.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Clement?
Actually, Mark, if I could just very quickly. Councillor Ray, I 100% agree with you on parking. Behold, the March 21st, 2019 parking study that the city of Lewiston did. This stays on my desk. Yes, I fully agree with parking. Among other things, yes.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I missed most of Counselor Jensen's audio and part of Counselor Delinus's, I don't know what happened, whether it was bandwidth or what, but I just wanted to chime in. I'm, I don't know if I want to say I'm excited, but I, I do see a tremendous value to this program. Bearing in mind that this is going to be the budget season of all budget seasons. I think if we can find the financial wherewithal to get involved with this program, I can see my way to supporting it because I think it means a bigger return for us in the long run. And for that reason, I, I think we need to take a very long, hard look at it. But having said that, I know that we have some tremendous priority challenges ahead of us as, as we go through this season this year. But if we can come up with a way of doing it, then I, I can see us doing it and it paying off for us in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think this is the first time we've seen what your excited face looks like, so.
Don't get used to it.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the council? All right, this will be discussed more thoroughly during our budget process when we, you know, are talking about several other prospective new projects. But I think it's pretty easy to tell by the enthusiasm of the council that, you know, you're definitely going to get some serious consideration. So good job to both you and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. All right. Is there any other business city councils may have seen none? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Counselor Jensen and I need another second because two came in at the same time.
I think that was Counselor Delinus.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
All right, and I don't, I see how it's going. You want to call the role Administrator Dote?
Any counselor from Ward one?
Yes.
City counselor from Ward two?
Yes.
City counselor from Ward three?
Yes.
City counselor from Ward four?
Yes.
City counselor from Ward five?
Yes.
City counselor from Ward six?
Yes.
And city counselor from Ward seven?
Yes.
Motion passed. Meeting is adjourned.
All right, thank you all. Have a good evening.